Your brother.
Is that Rusty?
Priest. Your brother priest, he's supposed to do the prayers this month.
Yeah, I'll call, when I make a note here and call the secretary, I know her, Louise. Hey, you know where to get Father Ben's gift here.
Yeah.
He likes to do it.
I know.
Yeah, it's all right. Good to have you, sir.
She's right there.
Yeah. This one here. That's mine here. Whoa.
No, the Dr. Martin.
Oh, Dr. Martin, yeah.
As soon as we get Commissioner Longstruth out there, we're gonna start with the children. He knows everybody in here. Does a great job. Everybody please stand. DeeDee, will you please lead us in prayer?
Sure. Gracious Lord, we give you thanks that the scripture invites us to love one another as you have loved us, regardless of who we are, where we come from, what condition we're in, and what we believe. In the same way, oh Lord, we give you thanks for the Marion County Commission, and the way that they try to be involved in loving one another and loving your neighbors yourself, whether in the esteemed helping of healthcare, or recreation, or people's needs, or infrastructure of the county. And so today, we give you thanks that they try to help out the people, and we give you thanks for those who are here to present on behalf of all people. Our Father, guide us and go with us and direct us in our efforts to make this a place of heaven here on earth the best we can, help us to overcome prejudices and stigmas and problems that other places are having, so that we too can be indeed a friendly city, a friendly county, a friendly state, and a friendly nation. Guide us all in this service and in our service to you and all of life. We pray and ask in thy holy name. Amen.
Thank you, DeeDee. Chris, would you lead us in pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This county commission meeting will have the order. Linda, would you close that door, please, if you want?
Well, the sheriff told me I could.
Oh, okay, well, he whatever me. I guess that'll pull house.
The outside wouldn't, but it's horrible.
As long as you're there, Sheriff, we're fine. Stay right there. Thank you. Chris, will you do the first part, please?
We have the acceptance of the minutes for the April 21st, 2021 meeting.
I believe the commission accepted the minutes as presented.
Second, then?
And I'll concur. Next item, please.
We have the honorations 2021-139 through 2021-154 from the assessor.
Assistant recommendation of the assessor and the prosecuting attorney. I'll move the president's side.
You got enough room, Chris?
Yeah, thank you.
A second.
And I'll concur. And the next item, please.
We have an order confirming and ratifying the fiduciary supervisor's report of claims and settlement reports in the following states: Fleming, Edwards, Alawat, De Bellis, Viands, Doschon, Showalter, West, Woods, King, Sandy Hayes, Deanie, Bradley, Los, Hamilton, Roatford, Dolag, Cunningham, Marks, Johnston, Golden, Willard, Beveridge, Merchant, Gaston, Sorrow, Morgan, Morgan, Jenkins, Stout, Black, Michael, Amos, Mocelli, Sell, Freeman, La Masters, Satterfield, Martin, Wolf Price, Glover, James, Rambola, Thompson, Rush, Hawst, Stutler, Pearson, Masters, Hickman, Nester, and Boyer. And this requires the signature of the commission and clerk.
Great job on those names, Chris. Is anybody here to deal with any objections to these orders confirming and ratifying fiduciary supervisors' report?
Do you know objections? I'll move the commission sign your.
Second.
And I'll concur. Next item, please.
We have a West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways agreement between Middletown Commons and Marion County. And very brief summary, this agreement allows General Acquisitions LLC to perform certain construction activities within the Division of Highways right of way. There are about 10 pages of provisions, limitations, and responsibilities contained in this agreement for the developer, and we are signing off on the TIF fund approval for applicable expenses. And again, this is for the president to sign. And there's three copies.
Is anybody here today to talk to this, or has this? Chris, you mean this, Chuck?
Yeah.
Good.
I can speak to it if I need to. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions on this item on our agenda concerning the Division of Highways and our involvement in that? If not, then we'll just wait a bit of motion.
Yeah, that would be fine. I just have one question. Is it for the power lines or for the water and sewage, for both?
This is actually for the roadway improvements along 250.
Okay.
For the paving and widening and restriping and signalization.
That also be for the new entrance from where the Walmart entrance is down?
Yeah.
Include that as well, and as well as in front of BB and Thiel, all the way down to the other intersection?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'll move the president to sign the agreement.
Second.
And I'll concur. And it's good to see progress moving forward with that project, one of the biggest ones we've had here in Marion County. To hope to continue success and see the stores opening up and the place looks nice and there's a lot done out there so far. A lot of Mon General and their facility and so many things going on out there. We're looking forward to the completion of that project. I'd be glad to sign these documents. There's a bunch up here. I think I'll do it after the meeting. Next item, please.
We have a memorandum of understanding between Marine Forces Special Operations Command and Marion County, West Virginia, and Marion County Sheriff's Office. This is for a five-year period, broad scope of military training in Marion County. The sheriff has signed off and I think can answer some questions if you have them regarding what's actually in this agreement.
Sheriff, do you want to? Want to take the opportunity to talk to you about that?
What it is, is an agreement between the armed forces and Marion County to allow specialized training to soldiers, technicians. They're going to be communication experts, surveillances, that sort of thing. They just come into the area. You really won't even notice that they're here. They're not going to be wearing uniforms, running through the streets or anything like that. It's training in basically reconnaissance and urban operations. So in case the military would happen to go into a hot area of a city similar to Fairmont or an area terrain similar to Marion County, these soldiers would be the first ones in. They would conduct reconnaissance where buildings are, traffic flows, that sort of thing. Probably the only thing citizens will notice is a few helicopters now and then bringing these folks in. And they're not going to be weaponized. They're not going to be walking through the streets with rifles and hand grenades or anything like that. The understanding encompasses that they will abide by all the laws, regulations, rules of a particular area. If there is an infraction, not only will they suffer the consequences here, but on the federal level will be removed. These are very specialized teams. They're not just everybody being thrown into a neighborhood to watch a house. So it's a five-year agreement. There have been similarly ones in place before, and there's never been any issues with it that I'm aware of. Any other questions?
How did it come about to even Fairmont?
They try to pick some areas, my understanding, somewhere during, they also have the armory in place where they can headquarter those sorts of things. There are some similarities between abandoned buildings and structures here and I guess other places that they're looking at.
Because Marine Corps and the people?
I think it's a combined force. But I think the Marine Corps is. I wasn't in the military, so I don't know the proper terms. I was kind of in charge of it.
Sheriff, thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation.
Anybody else?
Very good.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Very good.
I'll move the commission, as president, to sign a memorandum of understanding.
Second.
And I'll concur. The next item.
We have a request for advice and consent of the county commission from Jeffrey Freeman, prosecuting attorney, to accept the resignation of Lili Oost as administrative assistant effective April 27th, 2021.
I'll move the commission to accept the resignation of Lili Oost as administrative assistant effective April 27th, 2021.
Second.
And I'll concur. And the next item.
We have a request for advice and consent of the county commission from Ron Dastorn, surrogate clerk to hire Mackenzie A. Howe, full-time with benefits effective Friday, April 30th, 2021.
All right, I'll move the commission to grant some advice and consent to hire Mackenzie A. Howe, full-time with benefits effective Friday, April 30th, 2021.
Second.
And I'll concur. Next item.
We have a request for advice and consent of the county commission from James Riffle, sheriff, to hire David Odell as a holding transport officer, full-time with benefits effective Tuesday, April 20th, 2021.
And I'll move the commission to grant its advice and consent to hire David Odell as a holding transport officer, full-time with benefits effective Tuesday, April 20th, 2021.
Second motion.
I'll concur. Next item, please.
We also have a request for advice and consent of the county commission from James Riffle, sheriff, to hire Brittany Swager as holding transport officer, full-time with benefits effective Monday, April 26th, 2021.
And also move the commission to grant some advice and consent to hire Brittany Swager as holding transport officer, full-time with benefits effective Monday, April 26th, 2021.
Second motion.
Concur. Next item.
We have a request for advice and consent of the county commission from Jeffrey Freeman, prosecutor, to hire Marley E. Angelusi as administrative assistant, full-time with benefits effective April 26th, 2021.
Move the commission to grant its advice and consent to hire Marley E. Angelusi as administrative assistant, full-time with benefits effective April 26th, 2021.
Second motion.
And I'll concur. Next item.
We have a request for advice and consent of the county commission to move Fred Young to maintenance supervisor, and Christian Love into the maintenance department from the housekeeping department. And of course, this is to replace Jeff Beaufort, who has retired.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you.
You did a good job, Arma.
Before we bring something up, a little reference to that, or maybe at this meeting too, but.
All right, I'll move the commission to grant some advice and consent to move Fred Young to maintenance supervisor, Christian Love into the maintenance department from the housekeeping department.
Second motion.
And I'll concur. Next item.
In continued partnership with the WVU Music Industry Program, we have a request for advice and consent to hire Leslie James and Brayden Ray to help manage the events at Palatine Park. These are temporary part-time hires from essentially May 20, well, May through September, 2021.
These are their students.
Yes.
I'll move the commission to grant some advice and consent to hire Leslie James and Brayden Ray as temporary part-time event managers from May through September, 2021.
Second motion.
And I'll concur. We done hiring now.
Yeah.
Won a pretty good role. We may need a job out here. A pretty good role one day. Thank you. I'll concur. And the next item, please.
We have for the record the audit report of Marion County Commission, West Virginia, for the fiscal year end of June 30th, 2019.
That's for the record. Next.
We also have for the record note the commission received from the state of West Virginia Division of Highways, the notice of opportunity for public comment on the proposed partial abandonment of CR 20 over 2, Marion County, West Virginia, and that's for the record.
Also for the record. Next item.
We have Dr. Martin to present the program he developed to assist with healthcare in Marion County.
Dr. Martin, thank you so much for what you do. We've been reading a lot about it. We're proud to have you here today to present the program and move on what you do. Thank you. I just want to thank, if I take this down? Yeah, it's hard to hear. Yeah, just so you can hear better. I just want to thank all the commissioners, and especially Commissioner Longstruth, for inviting me to speak to you about our program. I can't really speak too much about the program without telling you a little bit of history on it, and I'll try to make it as brief as possible. Over a decade ago, the West Virginia changed the EMS Act, and they essentially wrote physicians out of pre-hospital care except for under the area of medical direction. Little did they know at that time is that working across the country, EMS physicians, physicians actually working out in the field were helping to build a specialty, a subspecialty that became a board certification by the American Board of Medicine, now accepted all across the country. When I came back to West Virginia five years ago, I practiced in Pittsburgh for almost 20 years. I came back, I was the first board certified physician in the state of West Virginia. Since then, I've been able to attract four more of us. So hopefully, we're going to be on the grounds, July 1st, we'll actually have five board eligible or board certified EMS physicians out practicing in the field. The goal there is, most of us have had some pre-hospital experience before, and the goal there is not to replace EMS in the field, but to augment what's there, to reinforce what's there, and there are really two prongs with it. Number one, provide advanced care, things that are beyond the scope of what EMS personnel can do. But number two is to educate them along the way and learn from them, do research. So those are the two main prongs of the subject. The program got started, we're starting into the third quarter of it. In the state of West Virginia, as I said, physicians were written out, so there was no way for me to start a program or start practicing in West Virginia without a way around the EMS Act. So to do that, the Board of, the Office of EMS, West Virginia OMS, opened the door to a pilot program for me. For the program to get started, it had to begin in a county where the medical director accepted full responsibility for the program. The program has started out in Marion County and in Tucker County because I am the medical director of those two counties, so I've accepted full responsibility of them. My goal is to expand it as we grow, we get more and more EMS physicians, that we can expand it to cover all rural areas of the state. Years ago, when I got involved in EMS, I noted that we really concentrate all of our major resources in the development of EMS, not just here, but around the world, in areas that are major population centers, areas where you're five or 10 minutes from a hospital. And really, those resources make the biggest difference when you're furthest away from a hospital. So I'm trying to change that. I'm trying to change that perspective with this program. And I think we've done a pretty good job so far. You know, we've only been at it for a couple, a few quarters here. We have roughly 15 patients that I feel we've made a major impact on. Some of them unfortunately did not survive ultimately, but we did give them that chance and that opportunity. So far in Marion County, since January 1st, I think there have been over 3,400 EMS-related calls in the county, and the areas that we're covering there have only been roughly 190. And that's one of the problems with focusing on the rural areas. There are fewer calls there, but that's where we make the most difference. So the goal with this program is also to help with that education, to find out ways to make the best of that time where you're not actually out seeing patients. Ultimately, what I would like to see this to turn into, not only focusing on EMS, but have us even doing home visits in those areas, in those rural communities, to be able to follow up with patients who were seen at our clinics through the School of Medicine. In addition, when we're out there working with patients in the field or EMS agencies, my goal is to keep it free, all right? I don't want to charge anyone for it. When I came up with the program a few years ago and started working on it in West Virginia, I just started applying for grants, and DTE, the Energy Corporation, really came through for us. They provided a $300,000 grant to help us get started. That $300,000 is excellent to help us get started, but it's certainly not going to perpetuate it or keep it going. So my goal now is to try to find a way to make sure we can perpetuate it and keep it free to the patients and the EMS agencies that we're serving. As speaking to Commissioner Longstruth, I was explaining to her that we're at the stage now where we're ready to grow. We have all of the equipment for a second vehicle, but we don't have a second vehicle yet, so we're in the process of trying to find either dealerships, anybody who will work with us to help us find the best price. Our first vehicle, which is sitting outside right now, we just got about, almost a year ago, and it is currently leased through enterprise rental car because we weren't sure of the size of vehicle that we needed. We went with this size vehicle, and so far it's worked out perfect, so this is what we're, essentially what we're looking for. And again, any help that the commission or anybody, you know, help that the commission could possibly guide toward us, we would be extremely appreciative of that. Again, my goal is to keep the program free. My goal is to keep pushing forward with, you know, having EMS physicians out there, working hand in hand with the EMS providers. I think that it's made a tremendous difference so far, just in the short period of time. Ultimately, we will also develop an EMS fellowship at WVU. We're in the process. We've already applied for applications through ACGME to get approval for an EMS fellowship, so we can train even more EMS physicians and branch them out across the state of West Virginia. That's pretty much the program. Any questions?
So appreciate being here. Obviously, you provide a life-saving service out there to the people of Marion County, and we appreciate, thank you for that. I'm sure people's lives will be affected and saved because of this program you have, all the cooperation you have with everybody, and Mike Angelusi with the rescue squad and all the cooperation you have with every thing that's going on in this program. It's wonderful. I just thank you, applaud you, appreciate your effort here in Marion County.
Thank you very much.
I did have one question. First, I want to applaud you for your, in regards to logistics, your common sense approach to the rural areas. But secondly, what size truck did you decide on?
Right now, we have a Ford Explorer is the vehicle that we have right now. Yeah, we were trying to not only have a vehicle that's the right size for the equipment that we need, but also something that is fuel efficient. And so far, I'm amazed we're actually getting 24 miles per gallon out of it, so it's been really good for us.
What dollar amount did you arrive at to keep it perpetual?
To keep the whole program perpetual, that's hard to say because, like I said, we have $300,000 to get started. In the first year, we did spend $100,000 of that to get things up and going. Right now, we're in the neighborhood of still having a little over $200,000 in the account because of additional donations and things that have come in. And again, I'm trying to make sure that we're spending money appropriately and in the right areas, getting the appropriate equipment and not wasting it on anything. So not to mention, the equipment is profoundly expensive, just to let you know. A cardiac monitor itself is in the neighborhood of about $40,000. That's just the monitor. The equipment that we have to be able to work with EMS and train them in intubation, the video laryngoscopes are in the neighborhood of about $18,000. So there's nothing cheap, and plus, all of it has to be kept up. So there are expenses in keeping that going as well. But so far, not only DTE, but WVU Medicine, the School of Medicine, they have all stepped forward and made contributions to be able to keep things going. The School of Pharmacy at WVU has also provided us with a budget annually to be able, they're essentially treating us as a West Virginia mission, which I was really excited about, and they're giving us a budget of medication, so that again, we're not having to pay or charge for those. Yeah, I don't have a real, to say that, you know, to keep this going on and on forever. I don't have an exact price for you because that, it will be expensive. There's no doubt in my mind about that. The more people we have involved, the better. The idea with the fellowship that I have is to pull in other healthcare systems as well. I would love to branch out, since CAMC is also part of the WVU School of Medicine. Ultimately, I would love to branch our fellowship out to them and start working from both ends of the state, so.
Dr. Martin, I do want to say something. Thank you for coming and what you're doing. I think it's wonderful, especially going out to rural areas that are needed more than anything. People here in Fairmont would get pretty close to a hospital very quickly, but the ones who live out in Fairview, Mandyton, and those areas, it's much more difficult, you know, with the transportation. I think what you're doing is very honorable and not charging a patient. We have a lot of seniors on fixed income is one of the things, too. And I may be saying this, maybe on behalf of the commissioner, maybe on behalf of myself, but if there's anything we can do and we can help to keep this going, I think this is something that is very productive and wonderful for seniors, especially in people who are ill. And for you to take your time, do this on your own, is frankly just quite amazing, and we appreciate that very, very much.
Appreciate that. Also, just to let you know that from the physician's standpoint, our EMS physicians are donating their time, so this is time outside of our clinical work. I want us to do this. There's no additional compensation for us, and we don't plan on changing that at this point.
Appreciate everything you do for Marion County and all the people here. Life-saving situations, and you'll make a big difference, have made a big difference since you've been doing it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I just could take a moment. I'd like to recognize the President of Mon General and David Goldberg. Would you like to say something, David?
Sure.
Always.
One, I wanted to come today, early on, just to speak in the public. I did not know Dr. Martin, who's a longtime friend from Pittsburgh. All the good people from Pittsburgh, from West Virginia. First of all, as we open our hospital in December, I will commit today to donate, to support what you do. In my camp, I think Dr. Martin will attest, when I work with Highmark and Allegheny, I oversold pre-hospital services as one of my operational areas. So I was not prepared that you were here today, but my staff is probably seeing this and saying, crap, he's giving more money away. The answer is, what you're doing to make a difference in the field, not every patient should have to come to a hospital. We need to treat people in their homes. We need to make sure they're taking care of their consistency. And with Mike and the rescue squads and EMS in this community and what you're doing, this is world-class. This is revolutionary, and it's starting right here in Marion County. So congratulate that. I wanted to come, one, to say hello. I've seen you all in every venue I've been around, in and around North Central West Virginia, but I haven't made it to the county commission and this little COVID thing kind of skewed the ability for me to get here. You've all seen that our hospital in Whitehall will be opening up, we hope by December. It'll be constructed late fall. We have to go through regulatory approvals, CMS, the state, they'll go through it. Any of you have been out there and you've seen, and thank you for approving the TIF money today. It's like a war zone driving on some of the roads out there, so thank you. I don't want to pop a tire. But the Beauforts should be applauded, Whitehall, you all, for what you're doing and making that level of investment. Our medical office building, Doctors Bonfili, Dr. Flower, Dr. Alapat, their new office will be open late this summer. It's well underway. March Weston has done a fantastic job of moving in, and Jimmy Staff and Rod Rogers, outstanding partners, and everybody in the technology park who wanted other access closer to home for walk-in and other services, couldn't be more thrilled to do that. And we will be bringing other specialists. I was talking with Mr. Beaufort and others here that are seeing doctors at Alway and Morgan County, or Little South and Bridgeport or Clarksburg. We're going to be bringing specialists into that space also, surgery, infectious disease, psychiatry, and others that will rotate in and out based on what the community needs to complement what's already here. I'm thrilled to say today, you may have seen in the newspaper, but Mon Health Medical Center and Stonewall Jackson Memorial are the only leapfrog A-rated hospitals in the state. We are focused on our patients, top service, top quality, to complement what's already in place with all the other healthcare providers in the state. So the people of Marion County with the Fairmont Hospital back open under WVU Medicine's management outstanding, our hospital will only complement that, and we're looking forward to getting here. I have the attention span of a gnat. I want it up and running already. So the fact it's only May, barely May, and we're not open yet, but we'll be there. We were able to save millions of dollars by building it at the mall in a four, with the walls already up, rather than starting de facto in another area, and saved about five months of time. So that really means something to the residents in the community. Other than that, thank you always for your warm welcome. As many of you know, I was commenting with a couple people. I have my Fairmont State hat. I'm a WVU graduate. I'm a Mon guy, so I'm like, three voices in my head speaking at the same time.
We'll give you a couple of county pins.
I need a county pin. I need to buy a house here, and I'll have everything covered in North Central West Virginia. But I was here for graduation at Fairmont State. I was there all weekend, Saturday and Sunday, so Senator Capito and Gail Matson speak. The caliber coming out of Fairmont State excited me about Ray Romarion and Fairmont. The faculty, the students, going to dinner after, seeing the buzz on the economic development opportunity. I'm excited Mon's growing our investment here and glad to be your partner. As the commission looks for other opportunities, building commission, healthcare facility, investments that you're going to be making, I want to be at the table with you. We are providing a $15 million project. I want to be able to partner and make sure we're funded for the long haul and to be partners with you to make sure the healthcare needs of the county are taken care of in collaboration with WVU Medicine and the independent doctors, and the doctors of. and the doctors and services that we provide. And it goes without saying to Lloyd and the Health Department, I couldn't be more thankful that he is your health director here and everything that's done to mitigate COVID spread in Marion County during these unprecedented times. I can't go without saying, please get vaccinated. I've been vaccinated since December and January. I do not have three I's. I do not have three R's. I have my group shift. My wife has no idea where I am any given day. She'll attest to that. If we don't get vaccinated, we will not get ourselves out of this. And I have put my family and my mouth, money where my mouth is when I say it. Please get vaccinated. Let's do our part. Any questions from the commission that I can answer?
I just want to thank you for everything that you do here in Marion County. It's wonderful to have you here, along with WDU and everyone else. But welcome to our community. And I know that you will continue to expand in anything that we do and you want to be a part of, we're more than happy to have you.
You have my numbers. I do. You know I answer my texts. I answer posting on social media. I answer instant messenger. Call me, I'm here. We are your partner, and we will be in every conversation. And as you look at other expansion opportunities, funding, any of that, we'll be here with you to make sure the residents of Greater Marion County get the healthcare they deserve, vital things.
Thank you so much.
I just have to rib him a little bit. He mentioned all the good people from Pittsburgh coming down here. It's like, I just wanted to remind him that I'm a West Virginia boy who went to Pittsburgh and made a difference. He corrected me in a little way, which is even better. So I am not from either place. I'm New Jersey. So I did, finally, I got home.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
We reached our time limit there, did you do?
No, no, that was, somebody buzzing in wanted to ask a question.
We'd like to take this time to recognize retirement. We spoke of earlier with Jeff Beaufort. Can't thank Jeff enough for his service here and all the years he spent here. Just incredible. When Jeff got here, I was here, and we hired him, and he came with good credentials, knew what he was doing. And I took him out, and I said, Jeff, we've got the dumbs leak, and we've got five gallon buckets collecting water up here, can't get it fixed. We've got problems at the collection center with the roof leaky. We've got issues with remodeling inside and some, everything I told him, he didn't get excited. He just went out and looked at everything. And it's amazing to me that in a short period of time, he addressed every issue we had here. A lot of them are major. We had to get funding, we had to get grant money. We painted the dome gold like it's supposed to be back in the day when I read many articles about our, we were the first county in the state to have a county flag. And in talking about the county flag, it mentions the beautiful golden dome. Well, it was white, you know, the one they painted it white with the fore header. But we had some things we needed to do cosmetically and also the saving the inside of our beautiful courthouse. It's one of the most gorgeous courthouses. And I've been in most all of them. There's nothing like what we have. And this thing is built back the turn of the century. It's incredible. But Jeff took his job serious. He did a lot of remodeling. He put things back the way they were. We took the old 1960s Parke's family, whatever, the paneling was in some of the rooms. We took it out and put it back to the, to how it's supposed to be. And I'm really proud of the effort he put forth. And every day he came here, he came here ready to work. And I did a fantastic job in Marion County. And he dedicated the best part of his life right here, right here in Marion County. That, they're not about done. But listen, Jeff, I can't thank you enough. The county commission can't thank you enough. The dedication you've had here, just unparalleled. What a great, great job. And in recognition of that, we'd like for you to come up here. And I gotta think, says, thank you for the time you've given us over the years. We're going to give you applause for the time you've given us. And we're also going to, we're also providing a very nice little plaque here that says, Jeff Beaufort, Marion County Maintenance Supervisor, appreciation of your years of loyalty, service, and dedication. Best of luck with your retirement, county commission. Come and party here. Let's get a couple pictures and thank you very much.
I don't know what to say. I didn't expect all this today. Very grateful for the time that I had here. First off, I'd have to thank my mother and father for giving me good upbringing and teaching me the right things to do. And then, like I said, my mom and my dad, my family, my two sisters are here to support me today, which I didn't know anything about. Then I have my daughter, three grandkids, and my wife here today, too. They didn't, they surprised me coming here. But I hope they can spend a lot of time with these grandkids and sports and watching them grow up. I never had any children myself and that, so it's a thrill and an honor to get to see these three here grow up. I have three that live out of town in St. Louis area, so I don't get to spend a lot of time with them. But it's just a great thing. When I got hired here, Butch Pettit helped, you know, and Randy and them was here at that time, hired me, brought me in, told me what they wanted to do. I tried to do the best I could. I really don't like retiring under these circumstances because I had an infection in my foot that's caused me to have to retire a little bit earlier than I wanted to. But it's been a great thing. Like I said, Butch hired me, Randy and them was here at the time. I appreciate everything that you've all done for me. I've made a good living. Hopefully, I made a difference for the county and everything. When I come on, Fred was the acting supervisor or whatever here. He helped me tremendously to get where I'm at today. And the other staff that I had, they were all a bunch of good guys that showed, just point them in the right direction. I didn't have to do anything else. They did it. Like I said, if it wasn't for Fred, I probably wouldn't be able to do everything that I did. I'm glad that he's taking over now. I don't think you made a mistake in making that decision. I believe he'll bring the county forward where I left off. And I appreciate everything and everybody in here. It's changed my life and made it for the better.
Thank you. Good to see Commissioner, former Commissioner Butch standing back here, too. I didn't see him back here first, but yet it was a great decision on our part, and we befit the benefits of having you here all those years and the success you've had. And Fred is the man in charge right now, and I'm sure that he's been around here a long time and knows what's going on. And we're, we're in a good position. We're in a good place right now. Very good.
I don't want to leave Mr. McIntyre out either. He's devil me and helped me out through my times and steer me in directions. And Chris, couldn't ask for a better, good man. Always told me, do what you need to do. Get it done.
We have good, good people in Marion County.
The staff, a lot of the department heads are in here today. I want to thank all them that are here. It's been a real good, real good nine and a half, 10 years here that I really appreciate. I had like 18 years in with the city, too. So with all your great help, I made it this far. Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate. Have you have a great time and the success of your retirement. Enjoy things and visit.
I hope I'm able to. Get this foothold up.
You look good, I tell you. Lost some weight to get these foothills. You're ready to go there.
I'm trying to go in the right direction and do everything, so.
If you come up front, we would like to present you with these.
I just really wasn't expecting this, to tell you the truth. Jump here. Hang in there, my friend. But it's, it's been a great honor to work here with everybody. It really has.
What's been the thing you've been most?
I missed the chance to work with you, Lynn. I was looking forward to that. But a lot of people don't realize what the county commission does. They're behind the scenes. They don't know everything that goes on.
Does anything stand out as your most proudest accomplishment?
Getting this dome fixed and getting rid of those buckets, as Randy said. It's, this, you know, overall cleanup of places that needed it. And it was just great people to work with. It really was.
That's good.
Can we get one with the crew?
All right, Glenda. Glenda, Mr. Colley.
Get in front of us. Get up there, Steve.
Spent a lot of time with them, Flip, all softer, just a little one coming out. I know my mom and dad would have loved to been here, but now for reasons, they're not able to. But big thank you to them. That's a problem with a lot of people, isn't it? But I had sisters. Bernie? Thank you. I'm going to give you a hug. I, this is a pleasure. I wish I could have got to work for you, but it must be a stretch. I'll tell you that. Yes, I'll still be around. It's great. It's great.
If there's nothing else, standing in recess until one day.
Okay, um, the. The 19th.
Does Lloyd not want to speak, Chris?
Uh, don't think so.
Okay, good. Well.